Letter from concerned resident. You all read it? Motion. You don't have to deal. Sam? Secondary. Teresa? Okay, discussion.
Has it ever been discussed before now the trucks? Look on that one? It's a highway.
It's a highway, that's, yeah.
My understanding, this is what's... Something that was said in a tribute that was a misquote. But in my understanding, the reunion, they're saying that probably forty-three, the number one, is not being paid and that's not, that's not the issue, is it?
No. No, no, yeah, that's right, he remembers two different things.
Because he starts with that, again, he moves on to this bypass.
Yeah. We are not getting payment of this year in town. But it's coming.
Yeah, but my understanding is they think that it's not being done. And I think that, that... What I'm saying is I think he, you know, that it was misquoted. Because the fact is, it is getting done.
Not misquoted, that's what he said.
Yeah.
He's not doing that stretch of road, we know that.
Yeah.
It's from Junction Nineteen to Junction Forty-Eight, fifty-three, forty-three, fifty-eight here. But they do not have the budget to do the stretching town.
Period, doesn't mean it's not getting done.
And talk about anything else.
Right, right, but that doesn't mean it's not getting done, because it is getting done.
Well, yeah, it's not getting done, they're not doing it, it's not getting done this year.
Their thinking is that it's not getting done at all?
Well, then, they can take all they want, what they think.
Well...
Okay, so...
But even in his notes, I think he said, even if it was done, it's still gonna end up the same way it was.
Yeah, and that's where he moves on to this side topic.
Like for us, I mean, if somebody wants to look into it to see what kind of funding there is if any, to move the highway as what he called bypass is not cheap and very, like, it's like three, four years down the road even if you did. But... Oh, everything, oh, I know.
And I, and I think by the time you pay all that, you can put a pretty good highway.
True. No, but there's other reasons.
It's not just, it's not just... But if you, Southwest, like, we were on that line, Louis Marchez is on there, and that's definitely something they talk about. And there's something that they're very, whenever a new highway is built, when they look at who's gonna be calling and how much calling, and if there's a possibility to have an alternative route that, that, you know, runs along, uh, parallel to the one there. So that's thought and talked about. So I think there's a, there'll be help there.
Yeah.
There'll be help there to try to figure out.
See now, if you went near the Cemetery Road, and then on the north side on the gravel, and say you turned it to pi to pavement and made it a highway, I guess there's always that possibility. Everybody on Manhattan is gonna be very upset, because it doubles up the traffic.
It would double the traffic there.
Yeah.
So you're upset these or you're upset those? Um, I, I found the point about the dangerous goods route quite informative, do we have one?
Yes, we do, we do.
And does it go right through town?
No. It's already done.
So he, he mentions the increased traffic, the heavy loads, um, research for grants, safer for the schoolchildren, I think that was a, a key for me as well. Because we do get a lot of, um, of traffic on that route. We get roughly thirteen hundred vehicles a day. Seems like a lot, doesn't it? And with my security camera, I can see the ones traveling eastward certain times of day, and it would appear that probably one in every three or four vehicles are speeding. How's that school? So, I mean, the safety of the schoolchildren is paramount. And, you know, little Johnny's not nearly as, uh, defensible against, uh, a semi-loaded down. That, that's a concern of mine. Is there, like, I know there's, the speed limit is, what does he say here, forty, forty-five?
Forty, forty.
Forty? Is there, um, traffic, like a Saskatchewan traffic, um, guideline for the speed limit in front of the school?
Forty. Some, yeah, we giant, some places, we giant, they do have it down to thirty. But that's, like, that's a, uh, a useful bylaw that would do that, that's on highways. But I added forty.
So could we reduce the speed limit in front of the school?
The council can create a bylaw, add it down to thirty in school zones.
Okay, put it in the policy, define it, first, I would approve.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and that has to be all the way, especially because it's a highway.
Because if we just do it on our own, they have to go through the ministry.
Yeah.
Because the RCMP could find if they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think the RCMP should be finding now with all the ones that are speeding. But, um, I, I think he makes a good point that we study the issue. There's, there's a whole bunch of stuff in here that should be addressed.
Who would it go to?
Should we begin the motion, like, what everybody agreed was?
Hold on.
Reducing it to thirty-five.
Do we wanna do that without research and study first, or just...
No.
I think it's safety.
I hear research is done.
They take first.
No, no.
Because it's gonna take time, I'll bet you it'll be a few months before we actually do it.
A lot of time down to thirty.
Yep. So it's thirty past the school and then forty after that?
No, it's in schools.
It'd have to be the same.
The whole intersection path past the, if they're, right to fifty, so.
It will be within the town model.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yep, within town law.
And as far as, we might be able to get grants for new signage? You know, you don't usually just put a sign up there, you have amber ones, traffic change ahead or something like that. So maybe we can get some grants to cover those kinds of things once it is in place.
Sam, is that something that, that department would look into, uh, study?
I think...
South Central?
The person to ask, I think, would be Julie, he would be very knowledgeable about that, but I could definitely do that.
Okay.
If you only have a specific development, it's something that's concerning to every highway. Like, it's not just a matter of ours, it's, like, it's going through towns where there's heavy traffic.
Yeah.
They, they brought it up, and it actually was a brought up, was a part of our conversation. Nobody asked about it, it's, it's a concern. So...
Oh, get the process going, see what happens.
Yeah, I definitely, I'll ask. Yeah.
Okay, but we'll make a motion to do this, but it's gonna be a bylaw set up, is what it has to be, right? And go through the ministry and all that kind of stuff.
Or no, it's, it's all a bylaw. We, we pass our bylaws, like, that stretches thirty kilometers, you don't go through the ministry.
Oh, yes you do.
Yes, you do.
Now it's a highway.
Oh, yeah.
The others. First one.
Do we need, like, I, I understand Sam's committee, do we need another committee, like a community committee or something?
It was just committee.
No. They'll just check it out, but we can have administration call department right now and tell them that's our contention. And they'll advise us. And the story.
Oh, no, it's not that quick.
Well...
It never is.
Well, I know, but you've got to get the ball going.
We can, we make a motion to get a bylaw in effect.
Right. Okay, make a motion then, that we, research having highway forty-three through town reduced to thirty kilometers an hour.
In a bylaw.
In a bylaw. And to break the information.
But that bylaw will only force only department to transport.
Then, yes.
Yes, and then we, we have this motion passed, we send that off to department to begin negotiations.
Yeah, the bylaw has to be set up. Then we have to do reading, so it's gonna be two weeks or one before we get to that point.
Yeah.
Then we send that off, and that could be a couple months.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, it's, the attempt is there and it's good.
Yeah, you gotta start somewhere.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, they'll, they'll indicate to the individual that we're, we're proactive on this, we're getting done.
Yeah.
So if this bylaw was to do, would that be only on First Avenue or would it also do Main Street? Because that's highway two.
I, I thought we were bringing him because school kids have been changed.
No, not for sure.
But you could.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea, yeah.
Too soon.
Just something to think about. I understand that, and to schools.
That dates? Nope. Seven, one of the tens. Just the truck route. First Avenue, or forty-three, Highway forty-three and Highway fifty-eight in town.
Well, they can go forty kilometers going to numbers that build.
Well, now, are we talking the whole town?
No.
Almost becoming the town.
Yeah.
But if it's for the high school, I mean, because of the schools, I understand why it'd be First Avenue.
Yeah.
Because we're looking at the focus of the schools, the safety of schools.
Because I mean, in a thousand and cents, some town went through this and they got the whole town on their grid.
Oh.
Well...
Did you read back that motion from the committee?
Um, I, I can't really say that you really gave a...
Raise your motion over.
I, I've got research, the change to the speed limit on First Avenue, East and West.
To reduce it to thirty kilometers?
Yes. And what is the process?
And bring, and once that motion is passed, to bring it to...
I think that's all within that goal. I would think that's all part.
But bylaw will have to be created.
Yes, to discover how, how we should go about it.
Either after them saying yes or no, or before.
So, I hope we're gonna go on, we got thirty kilometers there, and then once they hit Main Street, they can do other senses, okay, you can go forty?
No. It's thirty right through forty, on forty-three.
Yeah, I'm turning through the Main Street, then I can go to forty.
Yep.
I guess so, we have work. Which you usually do.
Yeah.
That's why all some of these towns are dependent on the town.
It sure makes it easier.
Sure makes it easier, yeah. True.
But, you know, from, from my house, I can see...
I keep it on thirty already.
Yeah.
I can see all jaywalkers. Like, do parents not teach their children how to cross the street? We have lights and everything, and, and everybody's still just jaywalks.
A crazy crosswalk in the middle of that street should be gone. I will take that one. Another issue. Let's just concentrate on this one for now, yeah.
Okay.
And then, I think maybe down the road to your right, we should maybe look at the whole town, yeah.
So good afternoon, Minister of Transport, what's your opinion?
And what they've done in other towns?
Next election, we'll have a referendum on that, the taxpayer, decide on that.
Well, you know what, that, that might be a good option.
Yeah.
Because I think the taxpayers actually should have a say in it. So Paul made that motion, what's your second?
Okay, Iowa. All in favor of that discussion?
No.
And what about the, uh, the motion that was on the table for Sam and Teresa? That was before Paul made the motion.
That's for me to check about, uh...
So Central?
Yeah. So, Southwest, and we can talk about the...
But your deal mostly would be for the idea of relearning.
Right. And just about what you can look, and what, what they're thinking.
Yeah. If there's any kind of funding really?
Mr. Ray? Yeah, all in favor, should ask also. Both are for or are against?
Oh?
Yes, please.
All in favor again?
Yes, we're all in favor.
Oh, you're not in favor, okay.
Um, well, I'm not in favor.
All right. You want it? Oh, you're opposed? I mean, you're opposed.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be recorded?
No, it's carried, the two, okay?
Still carried.
Okay, that's, that's a good point.
You're opposed to, sorry, you're opposed to the motion to check the highway?
No, no.
No, no.
No, no.
No, the motion for, the motion that I proposed.
For the speed change?
I think you're opposed because you think it should go further.
I, because I think that all the streets should be...
Okay, and, and why, how should we ask them?
It should.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if you go on seven, go across, we have children on seven east.
We'll go past parks and...
Anyway, they have to go for it's okay or it's not.
You got to see.
Well, and, and I see it as that would kind of be a part of talking to the Minister of Transport, wouldn't it? I mean, that, First Avenue would be our focus, but, I mean, there's certainly no reason why we... Well, I guess Minister of Transport would do...
The ministry would know where to vote, it's town itself, not two highways.
Yep, that's for right now, yeah. Forty-three.
Are we done with that one?
The motion was, was passed.
Okay.
But that's not Sam's motion, right?
No.
That one, how we have done?
Okay.
Sam's motion.
You seconded that.
Okay.
All in favor? Two motions come out of one thing. I remember that one before.
We're cooking.
Okay, thirteen dot four. Well, is the Minko, I believe. Motion, get it on the table. Also, the seconders, Andre, discussion.
So are they just asking a letter of support on, on our work?
I believe so.
Well, the project, the project's pretty intensive, you know? I mean, when you look at this whole study, I don't know, I didn't get that.
I can get it.
Well, with the last council, you guys all had copies.
Really?
I mean, no.
I do not remember seeing that at all. Did you just get it?
I'd say I'm not surprised. Well, here it is, it's quite an intensive program.
Okay.
It's quite, it's actually quite good, quite good.
I think...
And I gave one of these copies to Mr. Jean Bell, who's interested in the, you know, the green movement and stuff that nature. And, uh, maybe it's something we should all, you know, promote again.
Does that help out, uh, on the Lagoon say, if we went to ecosystem up there? Does that, anything to do with that?
Oh, interesting. I'm not sure that talks about it. Oh, based on, again, the option. And they don't talk specifically about the, you know... But it's, uh, it's quite, it's quite a, it's quite an intensive program, you know, the package. I thought, I thought the last council did a good job, pointing to again.
So they are just looking for a letter of acknowledgement, or?
Yeah.
A letter of support.
A letter of support.
So how, how would this, how would this apply to us? What's, what is that, how would it apply to us?
Well, I think of a lagoon expansion to the ecosystem so that we're not putting bad water into the river. If it's set up properly, it'll be clean water going in the river on its own. That, I don't know if that's included, is that in there? No, we don't have that. It's not really, but it does talk about water waste, ground use, energy transportation, the old community grid plan, how we approach it. Is this coming from when we had our deal up here, Andre?
That's what I'm wondering.
Stickers, stickers that...
Is that a, like, that specific, is that, is that their final report? Okay, then I think I did agree with that, that final report, yes.
But I didn't get that at the last meeting.
I'd have to look at it again. But, uh, I was impressed, I remember I was quite impressed with all the stuff that's in there.
But you guys didn't get any, you didn't keep a copy?
I did not see that.
Sure did. Well, you really explained it.
Yeah, can, can you summarize for us?
Tell us what we're gonna say.
I'm not reading yourself.
Well, you're, you're maybe, like, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Jean gave her something to do with it, was good, because he's come with Sierra before.
As he was talking about...
And actually, Sierra was talking about the lagoon expansion, and he was talking about something else, I think.
Well, like, this, this, the idea of the sidewalks for more walking trails, huh?
Yes.
He was talking about that.
You just want to hear it says, five milestones. Milestone one, creating a greenhouse gas emission new inventory and portfolio. Milestone two, setting emissions reduction strategy. Milestone three, developing a local action plan that sets out common mission and energy use from municipal operations and the community will be reduced. Milestone four, implementing the local action plan. Milestone five, monitoring progress and reporting results.
Could you read that again, I can't hear you that.
Did old council have this, could old council have this done, or this is just what the...
No, it was the old council.
Oh, we had them, and then they came and asked a lot of questions, they did a survey.
We had to get back to them because they weren't being very quick at getting back.
Yeah, and then they finally got the report. Because in that was talking about the rain kit and, and a lot of our lighting systems, changing our, the lighting, what we can do, there was definitely a cost, but what the long-term cost savings would be. Um, reassessing a lot of our equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
They have IRG, reducing that.
The GHG emissions rights sector, they have the water, the sewers, the streetlights, the vehicles, the building. And, and, so they kind of broke down all of that part of it. And, and we're to take this and see the community energy plan, and the suggestion they'll have, if we're gonna try to reduce GHGs, then here's a plan to start with. Go get the numbers we're working with, set a plan in place, go for it. Uh, I know the community of Smolka, Alberta, I get the paper, it's a town the same size as ours. Northern Alberta, north of Edmonton, they are, they've applied for two hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, loan, uh, to venture, based on grants, to have all of their buildings, municipal buildings put under solar panels. It's quite a complex, quite an intensive program. That would be part of what community missions would be about, if we were to suddenly say, can we find an energy source for the rain? Be it geothermal, be it wind, be it solar. That would be applicable for the grants, because it's not, the grants are quite specific, and you're applying for those particular programs. There are a lot of them out there, and you can totally tap in on them. Definitely look into getting something like that. And this is part of the year. So the vision here, the town gravel, gets positioned itself as a community leader in the area of climate change action and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in order to help navigate the potential long-term impact of climate change. So that's how it is. And so there, there's a start, it's, you know...
That would be a good job for a focused community.
Yeah, actually, you're right.
Instead of all us trying to get our heads around, that would be a good job for a focused community.
Yeah, I, I totally agree.
And, you know... See, and one goal five, which is reduce the landfill waste in the town of Grouse, of, you know, develop composting programs, and then tree shredding programs, actions. Span the awareness and indication. Establish intermunicipal cooperation on reduction of waste. And I think that's something we were doing with, when you had the regional concept of the, the landfill thing, you know? So there are some of these that are already in place here, you know? Install gray water recovery in all available municipal buildings. Simple actions that I think we know of and can implement that wouldn't cost a lot of money, but there are a lot of grants available, and we're trying to move towards this program, this program. And I've looked at it in other communities, and we just have to have a focus to me.
I think that would be a great way to kick off.
To do it all, and just, you know?
And then get rid, get rid of the letter of support.
Yep.
See if we can get a committee together and start with them, let them know that, and see what we can do. Motion. Support letter. Paul? Andre, seconder. Discussion's over with. All in favor?
So what did you and Andre, what was your motion, just put this on the table, or you had already had it?
Oh, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay. I don't remember after that, honestly.
So in order to, okay, now, it's just, it's all up in the air, is there, is there somebody on, in here who might wanna, from council, might wanna get a group of people with this interest?
Okay, you gotta back up and do something.
We're gonna send a letter of support, and, uh, and then next that week, now, what are we, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna make a call out for people?
I think it should be council as well as public, we definitely need public to put on it.
Yeah. Because all the grant applications, like I say, there are a lot, a lot of grants for alternative energy sources, geo, solar, wind. You've gotta really have the ability to write those grants properly. And as you say, both of these, to the government, the feds are gonna be bringing up lots of these programs. And this could be the opportunity, you know, we have to know all the right...
So it sounds like all you're already positioning to be part of that.
Like, it sounds to me like you and Andre would be, be two big council people to be in this committee and get a group around it. I did one, I don't think I'm great, because I got a lot of other things I gotta get finished.
Yeah.
But I also, interestingly, be part of it.
Like, there's some local...
Sounds like all of us are...
Jean, Jean, I can, I can contact a few people that I know that would be interested in that.
I'd like to be on that. So Paul, Andre, you're making this motion to department's committee, right?
Yeah.
Who's second?
I will. No, we hear you.
Keep them alive.
Teresa, can I ask one question on the...
All in favor? I just want to say.
Can we do this? Are we, are we making reply to Lucy and Doug's letter?
That we'll be looking, yeah, that, something...
Is somebody just gonna write to them and say, you know, we're, we're the council?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, that's kinda how we do that, right?
A letter that is gonna go to...
Doug and Lucy, just to let them know we, we read your letter, and the council, and we're gonna, our first action will be to reduce authority.
No.
Our first action is this, we're looking into it, we're just looking into it, and we're trying to figure out, you know, what, what the alternative, so I don't need to commit anything, okay? That would be my...
So, we can have it begin, Sam?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Well, I just asked them, oh, yeah.
I was ready to call it, and then that...
Okay, so did you get that, I moved, you know, they'll be writing a letter? That's, that's half business, so how does that work? Sorry.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
You're like two things behind. One step forward, two steps back.
I know, I just...
And who made that motion to write this letter?
Uh, Andre did. Again? Okay. And also, and also...
You, you what? I thought you made it.
I made the motion, I was just, I was thinking, we didn't say how would we reply to that letter, I'm sorry, I should have, we should, I should have thought of that back there, so...
But you don't think they'll ask what we're doing?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll just say, no, we just noted the letter, and we're gonna try to look into it.
Thank them for their consideration, that has some good points, and lots for us to look into.
You hear that? Sorry.
You made the motion, who's second in it? I'll second it.
Yeah, Teresa. I'm sorry, man. I think Sam should read the letter, she should. All in favor?
Whatever it is.
So now, we're all in favor, we're all agreeing.
Yep.
Actually, it's a good point.
Yeah.
It's a courtesy to follow up with any letter.
Thirteen dot five is, uh, I guess what I want to note from Jason Kavanaugh.
And, and...
Motion to discuss. Get it on the table. Ray? Seconder. Teresa? Okay.
I, I didn't understand this one, he's just writing us a letter to say he's gonna send us a proposal.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
It's dated November the twenty, twenty twenty.
Well, because he's, he's been calling and, he's been emailing and...
Called him, okay. Where's Jason from?
I believe he's from the flesh.
Right, okay, that's the, you're done.
Yeah.
So right now, we just receive and file this, we've been on it? And we have, we'll come through with something else if anything.
Does he know that we're looking at it on Google? Does he know that we're looking at it on the week?
I, I told him about that, cause I actually brought him through the school, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did tell him that there was another guy looking at it. Cause I did the tour for him as well.
Yeah? But if he's not gonna send us a proposal, there's really no, no, that's the hard part, right?
Yeah.
But it sounds like he has been sent a proposal.
He is gonna send it.
Or he was back in November.
Oh, I get you, yeah.
Well, he's, he's started his tour now, so we'll see what he has.
We have the tour already?
Yep.
When did you do the tour?
Well, it's gotta be two months ago now.
So this is kind of old, like?
It is, but he's been calling, so.
Okay. So it sounds like he's still involved in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually probably three months, and Suzie would think it's a long time.
Okay.
So you want me to call, just to send him a email back and say you sent your proposal?
Yeah. Cause I got a call concerning this individual, and he was under the impression the building had been sold to somebody, and it was going to be demolished. I don't know where he got that.
Lots of bad information out there.
I know, and I just, whatever, so.
Did you print that?
Huh?
Did you print that?
You want me to print it?
No.
I'll say, Sam said.
All right, uh, thirteen dot six, the bell plane sign.
Right.
All right. Now, we just got this, so you can explain it to us?
Oh, well, okay, there's a motion. Oh, yes, motion on the table.
I'll move.
Wait, wait, sorry.
Sam, seconder?
Yeah.
Okay, on the table.
Uh, Councilor Hawkins was worried about the, the value of the sign. And I did the research to find out what it was, and what it used. So that's a lesson for you to have next time.
What's that?
Do the research. Now, if you look at this, this is the last stats I had in the twenty-sixth evening. Two hundred and fourteen documents, quite massive, so I didn't copy everything. And, you know, I looked at, and here to give you the formulas for million vehicle kilometers, million truck kilometers, it's broken down, thousand weeks, the days include grid roads, TML, it's, it's a massive study. So what I did is I draw all this information, I just, if you look at page four, two, four, three, it gives what our section here, with the sign, the tenth axis, developed planes axis. Now, if you look at the A D D T, and if you look at the formula that the use for that, which is the average daily vehicle count for forty-eight hours times two times correction factor. It has here for vehicles every hour, five thousand seven hundred and ten. For, for trucks, nine hundred and sixty-five. So if you take those two, and you, you add them up, you got six thousand six hundred and ninety-five vehicles for a twenty-four hour period. That's what a sign is. Now, if you consider the reader, ridership of one point five, now, I'm just assuming, I would average it to be a couple of people in some of the cars, so one point five. That might be as a total number of ten thousand people daily. So when you add it up, times the three hundred and sixty-five of the bike, it comes to three million people, three point six five million people a year going through there.